Sometimes they are quite nuanced and you know, kids have to take a lot of classes. And then in other cases, they're not quite as detailed. And so you'll see from state to state, the requirements do vary a lot. And also there's kind of a DIY pathway that some states have adopted where perhaps if you were someone who excels in dance or performance, you might kind of create your own pathway that is tailored around your interests. But that has a little bit fewer kind of regulations around it. And so there's this kind of push and pull around preparing for college and the technique, kind of the traditional way, and then some of these other alternatives and what should the standards be around those?
Can you explain what some of those other like more technical pathways are? I'm not that old, but I grew up in Indiana. So I remember in seventh grade, we had woodshop and home ec, sort of an entryway into sort of alternative thinking, but I don't know, that wasn't a pathway at all. And so help us understand, what do you mean when you talk about more technical routes and pathways? What type of coursework would students take?
Sure, I'd say some of the most popular ones are related to the healthcare field because those often have better paying jobs for not that much more education. And so you'll often see high schools will offer kind of introductory level classes where kids learn a little bit about maybe taking blood and learning about phlebotomy. And then if they wanted, they could kind of keep stacking classes on that and take more in the healthcare field, potentially maybe get their CNA and then enter the healthcare field right away. The risk of that is that maybe those jobs aren't great paying right away, but if kids keep getting education, it can build into a better career. So that would be an example of a pathway. Another one might be, for example, in agriculture, which sometimes there's scientific related work that kids will take classes around kind of the science of helping plants and crop building. And then that kind of builds on each other and you kind of keep taking more and more classes in that field.
So are there downsides to this alternative pathway to graduation? And if so, what are some of the downsides you've assessed?
Yes, so I looked particularly at Washington State. And one of the challenges they have is very common across the United States is finding teachers to staff the more career and technical classes. A lot of times, like in healthcare, these are very high paid fields. Same thing with skilled trades, things like welding. Those folks can make a lot of money in the private sector. So enticing them to come work in a public school for a full time job can be tricky. So we've seen states like Washington have made it easier to kind of apply your professional experience and put that towards getting a teaching license. Some states are also experimenting with having kind of those people be part time workers. So they don't have to be in the school full time, but they can still kind of retain some of their job in the field. But that is one of the biggest challenges that we've heard. Also rural schools who have fewer kids are often able to offer many fewer classes. And so the kids don't have as many options to take some of these career and technical classes. And they also have trouble staffing. So kind of the equity issue of who gets to take these kinds of classes becomes more acute when you have different pathways.
I have one final question here, and that is you mentioned you looked at Washington State. When you've sort of collectively looked at different states doing this, is there a place that you think has really created a successful model?
I think everyone from the experts that I talked to told me that everyone's kind of struggling with the same exact things. I think something that was interesting to me about Washington is they're actually getting ready to redo their graduation requirements again. So they are a state that is open to feedback and are listening to what they think isn't working and is trying to make that better. And then that includes hearing from students too, who often say, having so many options is confusing. So they have to work on that.
All right, well, Kaylin Belsha is a national reporter with Chalk Beat, the nonprofit education news outlet. Thanks so much for bringing your reporting to us.
Thank you for having me on.
And you've been listening to Here and Now. It's a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Asma Khalid in Washington DC.
And I'm Lisa Mullins in Boston. This is Here and Now. Funding for Here and Now comes from the Museum of Science in Boston, dedicated to inspiring a lifelong love of science in everyone in museums, classrooms, and online, offering engineering design challenges, digital experiences, live presentations, and more, MOS.org.
I'm Roger Duvall, General Manager of Radio IQ and WVTF Music. In an unprecedented move, the House of Representatives voted to remove all federal funding for public broadcasting the next two years. This was money that had already been approved and public stations like ours depend on. While the recommendation now goes to the Senate, it appears likely that they'll also rescind funding. This is a critical juncture for public radio. If you value what you hear, please consider making a donation at radioiq.org or wvtf.org. And thank you.
Start your day with top line from the BBC, the most important news of the day from across the world in just 90 seconds.
Then tune into the BBC's News Hour for reports from on the ground and analysis from experts on the biggest international stories.
BBC News brings you all the latest breaking news throughout the day.
And overnight, hear the very best documentaries, history, science.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 16th, 2025, 2 o'clock PM session of Roanoke City Council. It's great to welcome you all here today. I'm going to ask our Clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is absent. Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Powers is absent today. And Mayor Cobb?
Here, and a quorum is present. I'll be leading the invocation today as well as the pledge of allegiance. And then I have a couple of people that I want us to remember during a moment of silence. So if you all would please stand. For a moment of silence, I want us to remember Dr. Billy Kennedy. Billy was a native of Roanoke and a graduate of William Fleming High School. He served as superintendent in a number of school districts throughout Virginia and was named Virginia Superintendent Superintendent of the Year in 2005. He was also appointed in 2006 as Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction and later became the Dean of the University of Virginia's School of Continuing and Professional Studies. He died this past week and his services will be held this week at First Baptist Church, Gainesboro. I also want us to remember Mrs. Timberly Martin, the mother of Timberly Bratton and mother in law of Casey Bratton, our Director of Real Estate Evaluation, who passed away this last week. Would you join me in a moment of silence, please? Holy One, as we pause to remember these saints that have gone before us, we thank you for the gift of this day and this moment to celebrate the good and important work of our city. We thank you for leaders and citizens who care deeply for our city and who work together for the greater good. May our meeting today be a reflection of your love and grace as we seek to more fully understand each other and share in the collaborative business of our city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City council meetings are televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. City council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. If you're interested in applying, please visit the city's website at roanokeva.gov to complete the online application. I'd like to welcome our Deputy City Attorney, who's with us today, Laura Carini. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
And now we're going to move into our presentations and acknowledgements, and we'll begin with our council shout outs. And I'll start this time with Mr. Volason.
All right. My shout out is going to be to actually council for doing the LGBT proclamation at our last meeting while I wasn't here. I think it's really important for our city to, as we're going to do today, have proclamations that recognize all the different diversity here in our city. So I want to thank council for doing that. And I also want to thank everybody who went to Juneteenth and to the other events around Juneteenth to make their voices heard. We live in a democracy and it's always great to see people out doing that, making their voices heard and having influence on their democratic process.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
You know, I was echoing the same sentiment and say that I really enjoyed myself Saturday at the Juneteenth celebration at McAden Park. It gave me perspective of how big McAden Park is because they had the biggest tent I've ever seen in my life and like tons of vendors and it was still like so much open space. And I'm like, oh my gosh, like this park is massive. So it was a great event and I'm excited for the future of what we do with McAden Park and the continued support of Juneteenth for our city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a shout out to all of the election workers who have been working at the polls. Early voting has been open. We have 45 days of early voting now in Virginia, which is a lot of time to cast your ballot. And there is a primary tomorrow, a Democratic primary. So I just want to remind everyone to get out and vote. Both of those races look close. So again, thank you to all the poll workers, everyone that helps make sure our elections run smoothly. And then I also want to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec staff. I had the pleasure of speaking at the Washington Park Pool Ribbon Cutting, and I'm really proud of all of the work that everyone in the city put in to make that happen. And I want to also thank everyone who responded to the incident that occurred there that we had to, as everyone knows, I heard a lot about, I got a lot of questions about why we had to close the pool for a day. And so I want to thank everyone who is responding to that situation and helping us move forward with getting the pool reopened. I want to say shame on you to the people who did that and took away that opportunity for the children of Northwest and all of Roanoke and people who come from all over the city to enjoy that pool. And you know, I really believe it takes a village to raise kids and to have a strong community. So I appreciate the steps that Parks and Rec and the Police Department and everyone are talking about moving forward to provide greater security there. But I also want to put out the call to our families and to our community members and our neighbors to also help us do your part. And when you see kids or people in your community doing things like that, trashing public amenities and resources that we build and invest in for our kids in our communities, that you call that out and you tell them that that's wrong and that you're not going to tolerate it because we're not going to tolerate it. And I hope that those people are held accountable and we will move forward with offering state of the art, modern, accessible facilities for our community, and we will not be deterred by that. So I just really appreciate everyone that responded and I really look forward to continuing to offer really robust amenities, especially through our Parks and Rec Department, to everyone in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
Echoing a lot of the sentiment already stated, you know, we're going to shout out Juneteenth, also going to shout out the two graduations that were, well, three graduations that we had for PH Fleming and the Higher Ed Center just as passed within the last two weeks. So congratulations, class of 2025. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I just will give a shout out to Virginia Western Community College and 24 years of service for Dr. Robert Sandel, who retired. Official retirement's the end of this month, but we had a celebration recognizing him on Friday, our Saturday evening. And we were able to announce that the large roundabout in the center of the campus, which he played an instrumental role in helping to happen, will be dedicated with his name. And so we're excited to be able to honor him in that way. We have a lot of proclamations today because there are a lot of good things happening in our city and a lot of incredible people in our city that we want to celebrate today. So first I'm going to ask Councilman Nash if he will head to the podium and if Reverend Dr. David Jones will come up and join him. Dr. Jones is the pastor of Williams Memorial Baptist Church. And I'm going to ask Councilman Nash if he will share this proclamation on Juneteenth.
Whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated by the African American community since the late 1800s, marking the anniversary, the anniversary of the arrival of Union General Gordon Granger to Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, bringing news of emancipation. Enacted two and a half years earlier, freeing enslaved people from bondage. Whereas President Joseph R. Biden Jr. signed legislation in June 2021, marking Juneteenth a federal holiday, the first new federal holiday since President Ronald Reagan established Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday as a federal holiday in 1983. President Biden signed out, signaled out the efforts of 81, 89 year old Opal Lee, whose advocacy for this holiday included her walk from her home in Fort Worth, Texas to Washington DC to ask for this national holiday. Whereas this monumentous day, Juneteenth, has since become a powerful symbol of freedom, resiliency, and the enduring spirit of a people who overcome unimaginable hardship to claim their rightful place in the promise of America. And whereas the city of Roanoke proudly joined in the celebration of Juneteenth through the Roanoke Cultural Collective Community Event at McAden Park on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, a gathering that honored the past, uplifts the present, and inspires a future built on unity, equity, and hope. Now therefore, I, Councilman Fajron Nash, with Mayor Joseph L. Cobb of the city of Roanoke, call upon all residents, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, or background, to come together in celebration, reflection, and renewed commitment to the ideas of freedom, justice, and brotherhood that define our great community and do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, throughout this great eight time All American City as Juneteenth Day.
I'm indeed honored to accept this proclamation and we want to thank the city for recognizing this wonderful day that means so much to so many. It represents to me always perhaps the delay of freedom, but never the denial of freedom. It may come late, but it will get here. And I'm so thankful for the kind of community that we live, so diverse and so committed, I believe, to the cause of equality for all of its citizens. Thank you so much and God bless.
Dr. Jones?
Vice Mayor, can you go that way, just a little bit? Thank you. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Next, I'll invite Councilman Volason to go to the podium and invite Katie Hedrick, our inclusive services manager, to join him there for proclamation regarding World Refugee Day.
This is very fitting because earlier today I was at the library and got to see, meet some of our refugees that are here in Roanoke, mainly from Afghanistan. So I'm very excited to do this proclamation today. Whereas World Refugee Day is an international day designated by the United Nations to honor refugees around the globe on June 20th of each year and to celebrate the strength and courage of people who have been forced to flee their home country to escape conflict or persecution. Whereas World Refugee Day shines a light on the rights, needs, and dreams of refugees, helping to mobilize political will and resources so refugees can not only survive but thrive. Whereas Roanoke is home to resettlement agencies and organizations serving refugees along with numerous businesses, educational institutions, faith communities, and civic organizations. Whereas refugees have made numerous and significant social, cultural, religious, and economic contributions to the city of Roanoke. Whereas World Refugee Day 2025 is a moment to show solidarity with refugees, honoring their stories, and showing unwavering support to their plight, honoring refugees not just with words, but with actions, listening to them and making space for their stories, ensuring they have opportunities to thrive in our community. Whereas we encourage Roanoker's to recognize the strength, perseverance, and accomplishments of their new American neighbors, reflect on the severity of the global refugee crisis, and to become involved in the movement of welcoming, standing in solidarity, of welcoming, standing in solidarity by saying clearly and courageously that refugees are not alone and that we will not turn our backs. And whereas the city of Roanoke is committed to developing a welcoming community and fostering an inclusive environment where diverse cultures are celebrated and all residents enjoy full participation in our society. I now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Joe Cobb, the city of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim June 20th, 2025, throughout this great eight time All American City and certified welcoming city as World Refugee Day.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Volason. I actually have a couple other people I would like to invite if that is okay. I saw Bethany Lackey with Roanoke Refugee Partnership. I know she is here. We also have a few representatives from Catholic Commonwealth Catholic Charities. Kalifia and Sam and Marnie are all here. I invited a few others I may not have seen. So if you have come in support of World Refugee Day, please, you are welcome to come forward. This is a really exciting day for us and it's very fitting that it follows the Juneteenth proclamation. It's very fitting that we had the LGBTQ month proclamation or week month proclamation at the previous council meeting because I think it just goes to show that Roanoke is very supportive of our diverse community. It doesn't matter if you're coming from a war torn nation. It doesn't matter if this is your third or fourth landing place. It doesn't matter where you're coming from, the color of your skin, your religious beliefs, any of those things. So I think especially now just for us as Roanoke to take a stand for our refugee community, whether they are already here in Roanoke, whether they have family members that are still trying to come, just to show them that we are here and we do care, that their voices matter and that we want to be supportive of them. We have amazing organizations here like Blue Ridge Literacy, like Commonwealth Catholic Charities, like the Roanoke Refugee Partnership, and a lot of others that I'm sure I'm leaving out. But a lot of people here that are just very committed to providing those services, to being welcoming and inclusive. So thank you, council. Thank you, Councilman Volason, for agreeing to this proclamation and just for continuing to work with us as a city and as nonprofit partners, just to show welcoming to our refugee community. So thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Would you like to say something? Yeah, why don't each of you introduce yourselves and just say a little bit about the work that you do?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sam. I am a supervisor overseeing Employment Department. Thank you so much for this amazing proclamation on behalf of CCC. We're very honored to accept this. So thank you so much. And thank you so much, Roanoke, for being so welcoming to refugees, even though we're not receiving new arrivals, but we are still working with the ones that we already receive. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
And hello, my name is Kalifia Dungy. I'm also a program supervisor at Commonwealth Catholic Charities. Just want to say thank you to the Roanoke City Council as well as Roanoke for being a welcoming community.
I'm Bethany Lackey and I didn't expect to be up here today, but so to be short, but I just want to show gratitude to our city, the members of our community. When we started Roanoke Refugee Partnership, it was and still is very grassroots organization run by Roanoke and citizens who are just outpouring with love and so much giving, are so active in welcoming our neighbors. And the city has always been so incredibly supportive of the organization and the work that we do with immigrants of all statuses and especially the refugees who have been resettled here and try to make a life for themselves. So thank you.
One, two, three.
Thank you all very much. Next, I'm going to invite Vice Mayor McGuire to head to the podium and I'm going to invite LeAnn Weizenfeld, Sustainability Coordinator, along with Catherine Knopp, Roanoke Valley Garden Club, Vicky Bybee, Mill Mountain Garden Club, Courtney Carter Plaster, Clean Valley Council, Candace Sherman, President of the Beekeepers Association. I see Jeannie Fishwick. I'm not sure who you're representing today, but we're happy you're here. Okay. And I, and I think I also saw Cindy McFall. Is Cindy back there too? Director of Parks and Recreation. So take it away, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas pollinators such as bees, birds, butterflies, and bats are responsible for the reproduction of nearly 90% of the world's flowering plant species and one in every three bites of food we eat. Whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy biodiverse ecosystems. Pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. Whereas pollinator populations are declining and some are threatened with extinction because their food and homes are disappearing, diseases have increased, and rising temperatures and natural disasters are affecting their ability to survive, all of which are exacerbated by climate change. Whereas the conservation of pollinators and their habitats can help combat climate change by supporting healthy ecosystems, air, soil, water, and plants. And whereas the city of Roanoke, Virginia has been certified as a Bee City USA and has promised to promote, protect, and provide support for pollinators. This is done by increasing the abundance of native plants, providing nest sites, reducing the use of pesticides, providing education, and encouraging community participation. Now therefore, I, Terry McGuire, on behalf of Joseph L. Cobb, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, urge all citizens to join us in recognizing pollinators and the important role that they play in our community and do hereby proclaim the week of June 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as City Pollinator Week.
All right.
Vice Mayor McGuire, Mayor Cobb, City Councilmen and Women. Thank you. I am LeAnn Weizenfeld and we are here glad to celebrate Pollinator Week. It's a celebration of a vital role that pollinators play in our ecosystems, our economies, and our agriculture. This is a time to appreciate the essential role pollinators play in creating and expressing human culture in all of its forms. These essential creatures, including bees, butterflies, moths, bats, beetles, and hummingbirds, are the unsung heroes behind the food that we enjoy and the beauty that surrounds us. We don't often think about that, so it's important to pause and do so. So we joined Bee City in 2022 and submitted our first report to the Xerces Society in 2024. And I'll give you some of the highlights. We installed 14 Bee City street signs around the city at the entrance to the cityways in downtown. We held five events with the Bee City Partners, reaching about 4,500 people. And we developed four habitat projects covering about six acres. And they all contained elements that support monarch butterflies. And so now I'm going to pass it along to Laura Wiley, Parks Manager, and she'll tell you some of the work that's being done in the city.
Welcome, Laura.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, council members. As a representative of Parks and Recreation, I'm very passionate about what we are able to do through our park system in support of pollinators. And so what we have seen since we've become part of Bee City is we've implemented these practices utilizing native plant material in our new projects that we have throughout the city. There is the area, the planting outside here of the municipal building in the Freedom and Lax Plaza area. Those are all majority native plant material or plants that we selected specifically to be an example for our citizens on how you can live in an urban environment and still plant for your pollinators. So we have some other projects through the city, through the park system that we're going to be implementing coming up. going to be implementing coming up. The new Eureka Center landscape will have some of those choices, and Lower Washington, you know, there around the pool and the area there along the stream restoration, that's a great example of how to do that. So, as Parks and Recreation, we want to serve as a great example. So, we're continuing to do that and have some fun things planned in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to Catherine Knopf, who's going to talk about some other fun projects.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Afternoon. I'm Catherine Knopf. I'm from Roanoke Valley Garden Club, which was founded 100 years ago, April 1925, and we're super excited because we love to plant trees all over the city. We started in 1926 in Elmwood Park, and back in 2013, we planted the lace bark elms there in the Art Walk in Elmwood Park. So, you might notice there's a plaque there. We've also, since 2010, maintained beds on the Greenway near the walking bridge to Memorial Avenue. Our members are out there always in the good months. We helped plant trees in the growing Goodwill Garden in Northwest and down Third Street when they reopened this building. So, for the past 50 years, we've maintained the beds at the Transportation Museum and installed rain barrels to prevent stormwater runoff there. We've also planted, two years ago, 12 trees in Upper Washington Park to replace non-natives that the city had to remove, and we've planted pollinator and wildflower gardens at Grandin Court Elementary. We've done work at Mill Mountain Zoo, and we work with Habitat for Humanity, planting new trees and shrubs for the homeowners. So, we really believe in public-private partnerships, and we're here today to celebrate those, such as the Bee City that we did with Mill Mountain Garden Club and the City Parks and Rec Department. And one of the best public-private partnerships that we have to encourage you all to attend is next Wednesday, June 25th, at the Grandin Theater. We are hosting a viewing of My Garden of a Thousand Bees. It's a beautiful, very short, 53-minute documentary that is not only lovely to look at, beautiful gardens over in England, but also it teaches you a lot about bees and how important they are to our ecosystem. So, we encourage you as our city leaders to promote and support more projects like this, and we're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jeannie Fishwick from the Mill Mountain Garden Club, and we are so happy to be here and be part of the Bee City collaboration with Roanoke Valley Garden Club and Parks and Rec. If you really want a wonderful example, though, of pollinators in action and great public-private partnerships, I want to invite you to the Wildflower Garden atop Mill Mountain in Star Park, which is the signature project of Mill Mountain Garden Club. In 1971, the city approached us and asked us to develop a wildflower garden on two-and-a-half acres of city land, and since then, our members have spent more than 85,000 volunteer hours maintaining and designing that wildflower garden. Recent restorations include a fully accessible pathway, so now visitors of all abilities can visit the park. We are removing invasive species and planting more and more native plants, and we have restored the pond, which is now the happy home of many frog families. It's a very popular spot for the children that visit the garden. The garden has been recognized through national and state awards, and just last month, we got a shout-out in Southern Living magazine that said it was a spot not to be missed if you were visiting Roanoke Valley, so we're happy of our tourism efforts as well. The garden is always a beautiful and inviting spot for visitors of all ages, but most importantly, it is the home to thousands and thousands of pollinators, made possible by the work of maintaining those plants and species there. We'd love for you to come. We'd love to give you a tour. There's always magic on the mountain, especially Thursday mornings, more weeding and planting. So, come and see us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for welcoming me, Mayor Cobb, members of City Council, and community members. I'm Courtney Plaster, and I am the Executive Director with Clean Valley Council, and today, as everyone on the Bee City Planning Committee has shared their passion about our joy in Pollinator Week and this wonderful proclamation, and thank you to Terry McGuire, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. I know his passion has been long, long-lived in the Roanoke City community. I just wanted to speak a little bit about one of the offerings that will be happening in August, our Pollinator Promenade. So, Clean Valley Council will be offering from August the 4th through August the 8th visits to a lot of the locations that were mentioned before, but each one of the dates will have a two-hour visit to public spaces, and each one of these has been selected because of previous visits, and a lot of beautiful native plants in those locations, a lot of wonderful pollinators. From August 4th, we'll be at Mill Mountain Wildflower Garden, we'll be at the Mill Mountain Discovery Center Pollinator Garden. On August 5th, we'll be leading our free programming, each one of these days, free programming, to the Kiwanis Nature Park and Pollinator Garden at the Lower Horton Park location. August 6th, we'll be at the Brown Robertson Park on the parking lot side, and we'll also be joining our partner at Lic Run Farms to look at some beautiful pollinators and their plantings. On August 7th, Mountain View Community Garden will be our visit, and on August 8th, Washington Park. And the beautiful thing is that we have signs in various locations designated as Bee City Pollinator Gardens and spots and locations, and we continue to hope to add a lot more of those throughout the Roanoke City. So, thank you all very much, and I hope to see you on one of these five days.
Thank you.
All right. I am wearing the, I'm speaking for Candace Sherman today, who couldn't be here. She is on the Roanoke City Police Department force, but she's also the president of the Roanoke Valley Beekeepers, and I wanted to share with you a little bit about the Bee Festival in Elmwood Park coming up later this summer. So, she is excited to tell you about the upcoming Southwestern Bee Festival hosted by the Bodatot and Roanoke Valley Beekeepers Associations. This event is all about celebrating pollinators and helping our community learn just how important they are to our environment and our everyday lives. It's a family-friendly event with plenty of fun for kids, including face painting, coloring, and free ice cream from the Freedom First Scoop Ice Cream Truck. Kids can also take part in fun, doing a little beehive inspection activity where they get to pretend to be beekeepers and learn how to take care of bees. And they are going to be joined by some of our local nonprofit organizations like Master Gardeners, Master Naturalists, the Bee City, and more. So, please come to the festival happening Saturday, August the 21st, 23rd, excuse me, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at Elmwood Park. It's free to attend, so bring the family and enjoy. She hopes to see everyone there.
Thank you.
And you should have flyers of all of these events.
That's great. That's a lot of great information, exciting activities, so come on up and let's celebrate with a picture. It's very exciting. Our next proclamation is in regard to Waste and Recycling Workers Week, and I have to tell you, this is an amazing group of people. I'm delighted to welcome Councilman Hagan and joined by Mr. Powell with our Director of General Services, Mr. Haynesworth, our Solid Waste Manager, and whoever else you want to bring up, and I hope you'll bring, good.
Yeah. I've brought everybody.
Okay. So, Mr. Hagan, if you'll get started with the proclamation, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Haynesworth and Mr. Powell.
Sounds good. All right. Whereas solid waste management and collection services provided the community by the employees of the city of Roanoke's Solid Waste Management Division play an integral role in making the city of Roanoke a clean, thriving, livable city where people want to live, work, locate a business, and visit. Whereas the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of the solid waste management and collection functions performed by the Solid Waste Management Division. Whereas the function, these functions include weekly collections of trash, bulky items, and brush, and bi-weekly collection of recyclables, enforcement of the city's solid waste management code, emptying of citywide litter baskets, and collections of the Central Business District sealed compactors. Whereas the health, safety, appearance, and quality of life for all citizens of this community greatly depends on solid waste management and collection functions. Whereas the dedication of the personnel who perform solid waste management and collection functions 297 days out of 365 days in a year is recognized and appreciated. And whereas the week of June 16th has been designated as National Waste and Recycling Workers Week, this annual event is for all waste companies, cities, towns, and states to come together to celebrate and show appreciation for waste and recycling workers. Now, therefore, I, Nicholas S. Hagan, on behalf of Joseph L. Cobb, Mayor of the city of Roanoke, Virginia, commend the dedicated staff of the Solid Waste Management Division for their essential role in maintaining the cleanliness and safety of the community, and do hereby proclaim June 16th through the 24th of 2025 throughout this great eight-time All-American City as Waste and Recycling Workers Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Council, and Madam Manager. We appreciate this proclamation. It is a joy to work with the individuals I work with because without them, we couldn't get some of these things done. Our main goal on a daily basis is to make this a living, vibrant place for people to visit, set up business, and live, and you can't do that when it doesn't look good. So, the team that is behind me is a big reason why we strive for that on a daily basis. We are so thankful that this particular recognition brings an opportunity for us to stand before you. We also invited a few other folks from the area. I believe Mr. Victor Rierson. He's with RDS, our partner that handles our single-stream recycling. I did throw invitations out to other individuals in Roanoke County. Is the program manager for Roanoke County here? Okay. How about Salem? Okay. But again, want to thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Can you please have your team stand?
Absolutely. Would you all stand? Do we have?
I don't want to bite them off. Also, we have our divisions here from facilities and risk management, like we call them.
I'm moving backwards, but we are going to have to be friends. We need to come in just a little bit more. Yep. I know. I know. Thank you, Councilman Volason. All right. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite up our Director of Real Estate Valuation and the Real Estate Team, Casey Bratton, and all of the team, would you please come up at this time? Okay. So, oftentimes, in some of our city departments, there is a lot of behind-the-scenes work that takes place, and most recently, the Real Estate Valuation Department and Office worked to submit an application for the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. This is through the, and I'll let you say it, Casey, the IAAO.
International Association of Assessing Officers.
International Association of Assessing Officers. That's a lot. But a couple weeks ago, Casey ran up to my office like a kid who's gotten something they've wished for all of their life, and I said, "What on earth is going on?" And he announced that they had received certification with no marks. In other words, this was like a perfect application that was received. So, I wanted us to take an opportunity to commend Casey and all of this team, and Casey, if you would come up and share a little bit more about what this certification means, and then I'd love for each of your team members to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, members of council. It was a team effort, but it goes back even to before, when I started working here, and it holds kind of a foundation based on our previous director, Will Clayder, who established professional standards, Susan Lauer, who developed and maintained, memorialized the processes, real estate evaluation teams, past and present, who've actually participated in helping us through this process and delivering fair and equitable assessments to our citizens, and then the current team, who actually came together and actually for over the last year and a half, developed this process for us and went through it. It ended up being a 300-page document that we submitted, a year and a half process. We had approximately, you know, we had approximately, I guess, 16 categories, and we scored 100 in every category, and that's unheard of. We've actually been asked to mentor other jurisdictions. We're one of eight in the state of Virginia, and we're actually one of 58 nationwide who have received this certification. So, it's a real pride moment for our team, but it comes from all of us working together over the years to get here. So, this is huge for us. I mean, that's why I was running up like a kid. I didn't believe we did at the first. We were really anticipating getting a lot of rebuttal. You have to, they'll send the chapters back for you to review, but we didn't get anything. We got a perfect score, and we were held up as a model for real estate offices around the country, and we were told to tell the citizens of Roanoke that we're delivering a great product. So, and that's actually in the document. So, we're proud of that, and I'll let my, each member of the team, I think we'll bring them up individually and introduce themselves. Not everybody's here. Some are on vacation, but we'll have everybody come up at each time because they've all been instrumental in doing this. We all participated, and a special shout-out to Jason Cash for being the direct project manager. So, I'll let everybody come up.
Good afternoon. I'm Angela Arnold. I'm the Deputy Director.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Sharon Williams. I'm Casey's Executive Assistant.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Sharon Williams. I'm Casey's Executive Assistant.
Hi, I'm Debbie Doyle. I'm a real estate appraiser on the residential side.
Good afternoon. Douglas Tenka, Residential Appraiser.
Good afternoon. Bobby Byrd, Commercial Real Estate.
Hello. Bryce Altizer, Residential Appraiser.
I'm going to need you guys to scoot in a little bit more on this end. Thank you. Yep, I got everything done. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. It is an absolute joy to spend first 45 minutes of a city council meeting celebrating our city. So, thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. And this is a time that we set aside to hear from all of our citizens. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council as she may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have citizens signed to speak today?
We have one citizen.
Okay.
And that is Randy Pollman.
Okay, welcome. Mr. Pollman? Mr. Pollman, would you prefer to stand or sit?
I probably need to stand. I sit too long.
Okay. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I feel like I'm at the wrong meeting with all that took place before. But whoops. Not all Roanoke City residents are happy at this point. And a lot of it has to do with transparency. One of them being the, what I call, the $5 million debacle. Nobody knows how it's being paid back. And if you want my opinion, based on what councils, the new council's already done, all us citizens, and I have a group of at least 50 to 55 behind me that feel the same way, your answer to every problem is, let's get to taxpayers. And do you know, per capita, this came out in January of this year, per capita, the average income in Roanoke City is $33,280 annually. You know? And then what you council people did with, knowing, and you can't tell me nobody knew about that, what do you do? You turn around and you give yourselves a pay raise. Every time I've been in the, in the public sector, it was all based on performance. And my opinion is, whether it's local, state, or federal, if you people want a pay raise, put it on a ballot. It'll hold you accountable. The restaurant tax. You know, I know a few politicians, and so far, I haven't found too many that have a lot of business sense. I've been in business for, till I became disabled, for 40 some, I don't know how many years it was, 45 years. I started with a national company and worked my way up. I got five promotions. And everything was based on merit. And the restaurant tax, I already know people. I don't know when it goes into effect. There is no problem solving I'm looking at. There may be one guy up here that's a problem solver, but unfortunately, he's in the minority. You know? And a lot of people don't know, if I go to the Walmart that's closest to me, and I buy a rotisserie chicken, the tax falls under that because it's ready-to-eat food. And from a business sense, like I said, I know residents that love to go downtown this time of year with the outside settings. They've already stopped going. But on the bigger picture, you're killing any businesses coming into the city to open a business. Where, I don't, I don't know the thought process on that. And the other thing I have to say is, I don't understand it. When I listen to all the presentations, and I enjoyed all of them. I'm a hummingbird lover. I got a Rosa Sharon in my postage stamp backyard. They go to that. I'm trying to hold a little money back, give me a feeder. But, you know, to a lot of us citizens, and some of the things that you, you talk about, I think it's, it's more, it's show. I'm sorry. And I've, and I won't, I hope I don't embarrass him. I've talked a lot to Mr. Hagan. There seems to be a resistance. Why doesn't the city take each department and look? The county runs on a third less employees. Everybody's got a deputy. Everybody's got a secretary, the executive secretary, a mayor, a vice mayor. And I heard a long time ago in business, from two national companies I was with, and it may sound crude, but we're not in a business. This is what I was told.
Okay. Can you wrap it up, Mr. Pollman?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're not in business to employ people. And let me give you the last example because I'm, I'm running, I'm running out of, obviously, time. But I had a guy that's in our little 50 to 55 group go down to the zoning office. He was the only one there. Two ladies at the, at the front desk, on their phones, made him wait. He looked over in the back, and five people sitting in cubicles, he could see one computer. Do you know what he saw? The person playing Solitaire.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pollman.
And if I could ask a request, because I can't get a phone call back.
All right.
My doctor wants me to walk more. I live on Dale Avenue. I wish I didn't have to. My side of Dale Avenue is bricks. And I've nearly fallen over there. And I have to, I don't like to come toward downtown. I'd rather go the other way and turn back around. But I have to go out in the street, and I have to be careful with curbs.
So I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll have Transportation look at that sidewalk that's brick.
I called them and can't get a response.
Okay. Well, we'll follow up on that.
And if I could make one last statement.
Okay, this is the last.
Okay. I appreciate it. One more. You're not going to like it, though.
Well, if it's personal, you can share that.
It's not personal.
All right. Then wrap it up, sir.
I hope all of you up here consider yourselves public servants. The mess that this city's been put in. Mr. Joe Mayor Cobb, why do you accept a $2,500 car allowance? When I've worked in the private sector.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pollman. Sir, can you help him find his seat? Thank you. We, I appreciate your perspective.
Yeah, but is there a response to that? If you're a public servant, you give it up.
It's approved in the city budget. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you taking the time to come down today.
Yeah, you told me on personal property tax, you'd help people with, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Pollman. Are there any other speakers today?
No, there's no other speakers.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine by members of council and is enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I do have an addition to the consent agenda. The current consent agenda contains two closed meetings. The first is a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry in an adjacent locality, the location of which will have an impact on the residents of the city, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. The second is from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a workers' compensation litigation settlement. And then we have a third that I need to add as an amendment to the consent agenda, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a contract involving the city's Legislative Committee pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, Code of Virginia, as amended. So if I have a motion to amend the, a motion to approve the amended consent agenda, and a second.
So moved second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Valleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the amended consent agenda is approved. Our next item is the regular agenda. We have no public hearings this afternoon. We have several items, or one item under petitions and communications. The first is the acceptance and appropriation of funding for a drug prosecutor. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance? Second.
Thank you, Mr. Valleson and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board for the multi-jurisdictional special drug prosecutor for the fiscal year 2026, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2025-2026 grant fund appropriations as detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. And I know Mr. McNeil is here with some of the team from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Are you available for any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does, any discussion or questions by members of council? Mr. Hagan?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
How much, do you happen to know how much the other jurisdictions put into this, the ones that are represented?
I don't know exactly. I think the, the majority of the money's come from the state.
Okay.
It's coming, and our office supplies the prosecutor, and it's a multi-jurisdictional prosecutor. So issues that arise in Roanoke County or Salem, you know, they, they tend to come to us for the, you know, for the prosecution. But as far as anything else, I think the majority of the money's coming from the state of Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's mainly here in Roanoke City at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? While we've got you here, would you like to introduce folks who are here with you today?
Yes, sir. Again, I'm John McNeil, Deputy Commonwealth Attorney. We have Tyler, and we have Arianna, who are both interns in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the summer. So I think they're enjoying themselves and learning quite a bit. And they're going to stay here. I'm going to get back to work here in just a second. I think they're going to stay for the rest of the week.
Great. Thank you, Ms. McNeil.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Valleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item seven is reports of city officers and the city manager. We have no briefings this afternoon, but we do have several items for action. First is the acquisition of temporary construction easements for the Williamson Road/Hawthorne Road project. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in second.
Move the ordinance? Second.
Thank you, Mr. Valleson and Mr. Nash. And I'll ask our city clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the City of Roanoke in connection with the Williamson Road/Hawthorne Road project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just a couple. We also have Mr. Ian Shaw that's here as well. The City of Roanoke is requesting a temporary construction easement from three private property owners along Williamson Road Northwest to install sidewalks as part of the Williamson Road/Hawthorne Road project. These easements will allow construction crews to access the properties needed to build sidewalks where none currently exist. Funding is available through the VTA Grant Williamson Road Pedestrian Safety Improvement Capital Account.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Valleson?
Aye.
Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item B is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Transportation Local Revenue Sharing Funding for multiple drainage improvement projects. We have an ordinance, and I need a motion in second, please.
Move the ordinance? Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation Local Revenue Sharing Funding for multiple drainage improvement projects for Melrose Avenue Crossing and Jefferson Tunnel, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such funds, as detailed more infra, more fully infra, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything to add?
Yeah, just specifically, the Virginia Department of Transportation has awarded 2.1 million in local revenue sharing funds to support two stormwater drainage improvement projects. One is at Melrose Avenue Crossing and Jefferson Tunnel.
Thank you. Any, yes, Mr. Valleson?
Kind of silly question, but where is the Jefferson Tunnel?
Mr. Ian Shaw is here to provide an explanation.
Good question.
I'm intrigued about this tunnel. I've never heard of it before.
And now, and now we're, we're about to all know.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the Jefferson Tunnel, that is actually an old pedestrian tunnel that was, basically connected in north and south Jefferson Street under the Norfolk Southern tracks. So looking at actually converting that to convey stormwater, which would eventually be a diversion of part of water around downtown as part of an overall flood mitigation strategy or flood reduction strategy for our downtown area. So that's one of several projects that's starting to move up all forward.
So it's a tunnel that exists for pedestrians, but we're going to turn it into stormwater?
It's actually been closed off for quite a while. So right now, it just basically holds up Washington City Water Authority water pipe. So basically, now we have water conveyance and a storm drain conveyance at the same time.
Thank you.
Are you wanting to, to tour the tunnel before?
Yeah, I kind of want to. No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
As somebody who lives downtown, highly appreciate any sort of flood mitigation that would affect downtown. So, yeah.
I was going to say the same for Melrose. Melrose can put really bad damage. And so anything you can do on that entire corridor, really, um, really.
Well, and, and Ian, I don't want to commend you and your department for the work you've done, you know, over a period of years. I mean, many, people who live downtown, and businesses downtown, see a noticeable difference. And I certainly and I certainly do as I'm going around, so, again, this is some of the behind-the-scenes and literally under-the-ground work that's being done, but it's paying off and it's an incredible investment that we're making on, with taxpayer dollars and the stormwater fee on behalf of the city, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item C is the authorization to acquire temporary construction easements for the Kirk Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. We have one measure and ordinance, and I need a motion and second, please.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city of Roanoke in connection with the Kirk Avenue Drainage Improvements Project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any- anything you'd like to add, Ms. Turner?
Yeah, just a couple, and again, Mr. Shaw is here to answer any questions. The city's implementing the Kirk Avenue Drainage Improvement Project to address flooding in the Kirk Avenue Alley through new stormwater drainage inlets. The project requires temporary construction easements from three adjacent property owners to complete the drainage improvements. Funding for the property acquisition is available through the project's multi-year capital account. Council authorization is requested for the city manager to negotiate acquisition of these three easements and any additional property interest that may be identified through the final design.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item D is the appropriation of fiscal year 24-25 Capital Improvement Plan Debt-Funded Projects. We have one measure, a budget ordinance, and I need a motion and second, please.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding for FY '24 through '25 Capital Improvement Plan Debt Funded Projects, amending and reordaining certain sections of the FY '24 through '25 general and civic facilities funds appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Ms. Turner, anything you'd like to add?
Um, I do have the, our finance director here to answer any questions that you have, and she may give just a brief kind of overview.
Welcome, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb. This is just for our fiscal '25 Capital Improvement Plan projects. We had not appropriated them once we issued our debt in two pieces last fall. In prior years and in prior practice, why, you are only seeing fiscal year '25 and not '24 and '25. The ban that we did in September, the big dollars for 57.5 million, and then a smaller general obligation, permanent financing in December for 21.5 million, those included some '24 approved projects and '25. The '24 projects had been advanced appropriated in July of '23, so they are not part of this. Only our fiscal year '25 projects, and they're listed both in the ordinance and on the council report, need to have, be, need to be appropriated so we will, so that we can continue on. The one change that was, um, that necessitated this, we are no longer, at least not at this time, doesn't mean we can in future, advance appropriating, and what that means is you could have the opportunity to appropriate these items prior to your bond funding, and that would just mean that your general cash flow would be paying for projects prior to having your funding sources. And so, beginning last, um, a year ago, we did not advance appropriate '25 items until the money got here. And that's what this is, so that when we go forward in fiscal '26, once we have those bonds and, and any other type of financing in place and funds available to the city, we will come back to you with the '26 projects.
Great, thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council? All right, thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Now I'll turn to Ms. Turner, our city manager, for any comments.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. I do have five comments. I'll try to be quick. Number one, in response to the recent DUI-related fatalities within the city of Roanoke, the Office of Communications, the Roanoke Police Department, and the community engagement teams have initiated a coordinated effort to develop a targeted DUI prevention campaign. Planning is currently underway with initial brainstorming sessions in progress. ISTAR has been assigned to compile and analyze DUI arrest data to inform the development of strategic messaging tailored to key demographics. This data-driven approach will support effective outreach and public safety efforts. As soon as more information becomes available, additional follow-ups and updates will, um, I'll bring them back to you. Number two, last week, the West Virginia Water Authority responded to a significant water main break on Melrose Avenue Northwest near 31st Street. Following the completion of repairs, the initial cleanup by the Water Authority crews, a stormwater street sweeping crew conducted follow-up work earlier this week to remove remaining sediments and debris before it could enter the storm drain system. Nearly one ton of debris was collected from the roadway shoulder and median. This proactive response helped prevent pollution from reaching Horton's Branch and underscores the vital role of street sweepers in protect, protecting local water quality and maintaining cleave, clean, safe streets in the aftermath of crashes, spills, and infrastructure failures. Number three, in recent weeks, a team of 38 members of the Fire EMS and community partners visited over 300 homes in Garden City, installing approximately 80 smoke alarms to enhance family safety. Representatives from American Red Cross, the Virginia Department of Health, Recruit Class 25-1, the Fire Marshal's Office, and the Community Risk Reduction Team conducted door-to-door visits, providing free smoke alarm installations, testing existing alarms, and sharing fire safety information with residents. Number four, I am excited to share that our deputy city manager, Ms. O'Brien, will be representing the city at the upcoming State of GovTech 2025 conference, and that will be held, she'll be leaving actually in a little bit, at the Amazon Head Quarter Two in Arlington, Virginia. This is a national event and that brings together top innovators, public sector leaders, and technologists to explore how technology can transform local governance, especially for smaller to medium-sized underrepresented, underrepresented communities like ours. She will be presenting specifically alongside Parth Shaw, who is the CEO and co-founder of Polymorphic and Instan, is it Chowdhury? Chowdhury, um, Business Administrator of Inglewood Cliffs, New Jersey. Their keynote session is titled "AI That Serves Everyone: Tackling Real World Problems With Inclusive Innovation." So we're excited that she'll be representing the city. Also, on Friday, I'll be representing the city at the Virginia Local Government Management Association Conference. I'll be speaking at the conference as a pioneering leader, joining with William Johnson, who is the city manager for the city of Emporia, Joseph Quinsberry, who is the deputy town manager for the town of Warsaw, and Charles Hargrove, who is the managing director of Virginia Institute of Government. This will be an inspiring session as we were identified as trailblazing leaders who have made history in our communities. And last but not least, um, I just wanted to, I know every week, I hope you all every week get my comments that I sent to staff, and it's been humbling to see that staff actually reads those and appreciates them, so, and I wanted to just say to you all, thank you for your continued support of myself and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. That's great news, and appreciate everyone's hard work. Next, we have our Public Matters follow-up.
Yes, I will turn it over to Ms. Hedrick.
And council, you should have all received a report on this.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Good afternoon again, Mayor Cobb, members of council. Relatively short report back from the last two council meetings. Following the envisioned Williamson Road briefing, Ms. Sanchez Jones asked about traffic calming measures in the neighborhoods surrounding Williamson Road. So Mr. Campbell was able to provide me with some information, specifically around the Sunrise and Round Hill avenues on Oakland Boulevard. The Transportation Division implemented a project which includes horizontal deflection features, new crosswalks, and in-street stops for pedestrian signs to enhance pedestrian safety and reduce vehicle speeds. I know this was a concern, especially as construction on Williamson Road may begin. A lot of people use that Oakland Boulevard area as a cut-through, and a lot of residents are concerned that there'll be increased speeding and traffic and all of that. So since this project began, the Transportation Division has noted a 14% reduction in daily travel speed violations. Additionally, 85th percentile speeds have decreased by up to 2 miles per hour. I am not involved in transportation, but I think that that is a good thing. There are also many of the neighbors and residents in that area have also reported that drivers are actually stopping more frequently for pedestrians and that the overall vehicle speeds are lower. So this demonstration specifically underscores how well-designed traffic calming strategies can also serve as effective remedies for mitigating cut-through traffic concerns in nearby neighborhoods such as those around Williamson Road. So again, as that construction does eventually start, these have already been proven methods to decrease speed and cut-through traffic, also increasing stopping for pedestrians and all of those things. And the only other report back I have, Dr. Hartman with the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group, shared with us about the 2025 Favorite Bus Stop Contest. I'm struggling with my words this afternoon. So since that meeting concluded, the 2025 Bus Stop of the Year was announced as the new pollinator-themed stop at Jamison Eastbound and 14th Street. They shared a photo on Facebook of that stop, so I included that in the report. That is actually also a brand-new bus stop. It is already getting a lot of press as the Bus Stop of the Year award recipient, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were kept up to date on that, and those are the only comments that I have for this afternoon, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. All right, our next item on the agenda is from our city attorney. It's Amendment of Section 23.2-3 Procurement Authority of Chapter 23.2 Procurement Code of the City of Roanoke. We, at our last meeting, had a briefing on this ordinance, so there's one measure and ordinance, and I'll ask for a motion and second, please.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Section 23.2-3 Procurement Authority of Chapter 32.2 Procurement Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Karine, anything you want to add before we vote?
I have nothing to add unless you have any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item three is from our Director of Real Estate Valuation. It's Amendment of Division 5 Exemption of Certain Rehabilitated Real Property. Article 2 Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation, Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended. We have one measure and ordinance, and I need a motion and second on the ordinance, please.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance amending and reordaining Division 5 Exemption of Certain Rehabilitated Real Property, Article 2 Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation of the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, repealing Division 5A Exemption of Certain Rehabilitated or Renovated Commercial or Industrial Real Property Located in Enterprise Zone 2. Article 2 Real Estate Property Generally, Chapter 832 Taxation, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended in its entirety, amending and reordaining Division 5B Exemption of Certain Rehabilitated or Renovated Commercial/Mix-Use Commercial with no more than 80% residential or industrial, industrial real property located in Enterzone, Enterprise Zone 1A. Article 2 Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended to renumber it as Division 5A, Sections 32-101.1 through 32-101.8, amending and reordaining Division 5C Partial Tax Exemption and redevelopment of conservation areas and rehabilitation districts. Article 2 Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended to renumber it as Division B and adding new Division 5C Hotel Real Estate Tax Abatement Program. Article 2 Real Estate Taxes Generally of Chapter 32 Taxation of the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, which provides for certain real estate exemptions for rehabilitating property in the city, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
That was a mouthful.
It was. It was.
I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Casey Bratton. We did have a briefing on this at our last council meeting, but, Mr. Bratton, if you'd like to just share briefly what this is about?
I don't know if I can share briefly. I'll try. But essentially what it is, is just reaffirming the previous rehab program, which was under expiration date, and then the addition of the hotel abatement program, which we've all discussed, and it's more or less to provide, to replace the 609 rooms that we lost, but ultimately, it's a program that we've had since 1981, and it's under five-year sunset provision, and we just, you know, made some tweaks here and there to change it, as you've heard, and make it more appropriate for today. So if you don't have any questions, I'm open for questions from you relative to that.
Thank you. Mr. Volleson?
Mr. Bratton, I was just wondering, with the new changes, especially the hotel tax abatement, is there anything that you'll be doing to promote this with developers?
Yes, um, so it goes into effect July 1. We have a team in our office, I've already, that are, they're gonna go through and all of our old material and update it, and then also, I've been meeting, I'm gonna meet with Mark Nelson with his help to, with some of the hotel developers, to explain the program so that they understand fully what we're trying to get accomplished. And we're available too. We're out, we're actually out doing the neighborhood meetings, like we said before, so we're gonna be providing information at the neighborhood meetings as well. I think if you remember, recall, we didn't really have, we didn't have a lot of, we had 180 residential properties from 2007 till now that underwent the rehab program. We can do better than that, and I think a lot of that, it's based on us not really getting out into the neighborhoods and talking the way we're, and COVID being part of that, but we're gonna reinvigorate our efforts to do so.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bratton. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you all. Item eight is the reports of committees, and this is an opportunity for any council members who serve as liaisons for certain authorities, boards, or committees to share any updates. I will just share briefly that the GRTC board met earlier today, adopted our fiscal year '26 budget, as well as appointed and made some new appointments for the TPAC, which is the Transit Passenger Advisory Council. Does anybody else have any updates to share?
Just a quick update from the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. We're in the middle of our strategic planning initiative, so if any of you have received surveys, please make sure that you fill those out. Those will help us with determining how we improve the organization- Those will help us with determining how we improve the organization. And then I also wanted to let folks know that the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization has approved a study for the Franklin Road exit, the one that's in Old Southwest. The study will look at Elm, Franklin, and Wanjou to see if there's a possibility to create a full interchange at the Franklin intersection to help ease the traffic that's going into the Corillian Clinic area.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson. Any other reports? All right. We don't have any unfinished business or any additional ordinances or resolutions. Any comments or inquiries by members of council? We have no vacancies to appoint today. So this council meeting will stand in recess for closed meetings, and we will reconvene at 7:00 p.m. this evening. Thank you all.